There goes, testing one, two, three.
Yes, sir.
Call me any order, the government please rise for a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Busher, please call rule.
Burgess.
Here.
Jones, Myers, Tate, Washington.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
All right, ask for a motion to recess into the second session for first person, now is there a motion to approve? Got a motion in your second?
Second.
Motion in second, Busher, please call rule.
Burgess.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
All right. Ask for a motion to reconvene. Got a motion in your second?
Second.
Busher, please call rule.
Burgess.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
All right, we move to have number four public comment, call questions and comments which directed to the mayor, the speaker will be given three minutes to comment, the speaker will be allowed one opportunity to speak. So please state your name for the record.
Bernie Brewer. I'm coming back to ask the same question that I've been asked for the last six months. You indicated that $825,000, the Illinois EPA loan was going to reduce by $825,000 yet the supporting documents haven't been on the website, so I'd like to know why we as the public can't get a copy of it. Again, a second item that you talked about is that you said the residents were charged $10.50 for water-related items in response to a FOIA request, they said they had no documents, so I also would like a copy of that document which you haven't given us. The third item I want to talk about is that the leak survey was completed back in February of 2013, and we found that we had 16 leaks. Thirteen out of the 16 weren't, haven't been repaired or even just looked at. So now we onto this thing with the repair and placement of sewer lines in case we have problems, yet I want to know what is the plan or have the plan been devised to address this issue since the leak survey wasn't issued? I want to know why are we wasting all this money and we're not going to do anything? That's it.
All right, on the IEP loan.
Yes.
We have, what I stated was true, they've reduced the loan amount, so there, the $10 rate, went back and did a little bit of checking on that, the, it was only for a short period of time because what ended up happening was the, the rate went up, I think it was only for like two weeks, and then the rate went right back down because of the outcall from the village residents. So there was a portion of time where it just went up, going up for a couple of weeks, and it was brought right back down, so it came back for the board. So that's where we're at on that because.
Asking for copies of it.
And the leak survey, I'll follow up and find out where they're at on that. All right?
I'm asking for copies of it.
Next.
Copies of everything you said, I want copies of it.
Okay, you can ask. All right, next one.
I'm sorry, bud?
You can ask, okay.
I can ask those.
So.
We've been asking for nine months, you can't come up with a copies of these things?
All right.
You said it's true?
It ain't true.
Oh.
Larry Stewart, South Village. I hope you all had a pleasant time in the executive session. It seems like all the happy faces are here. No? Let me finish, I have my two minutes, you can't take that away from this? You may, you may, I heard you can. But, at the same time, there's nothing right in South Village I see. Crime is down, says our police chief. That's a saying only. But it's up in South Village, and there's no working that out in South Village with our police department, that he leaves up to how the board goes. And then we got people in the audience, peanuts, they're not even peanuts. But, the good thing is, time is ticking every day. Every day, your days are ticking, tick, tick, tick. And guess what? The board is divided just like your audience. Who's gonna win the division? Because somebody's gonna go, where the money? And one people already know where the money is, other people act like they don't care. I don't hear the peanuts. I'm listening. Where the money? Accounts payable, accounts payable, transparency? Where the money at? Was that executive session fair? I've been listening at the walls. That's how ridiculous things are in South Village. You know things aren't right yet, you keep voting like it won't make a difference. Time yet? No, I think I've done, I love that. I love this, because point blank, people need to investigate this little raggedy town. Because point blank, it's showing. People got new stuff, bankruptcies are running rampant, people are handling money that's not theirs, money being taken that's not theirs, and nobody has an account of it. They doing paperwork, paper shovels, and getting paid big money for it, for shoveling papers. I'm appalled at this. You know, and yet the peanuts are speaking now, they still stupid. And that's all they are, just stupid peanuts. That's all they can do, is peanut in the audience. Because they ain't gonna do nothing else, they ought to play dead, because that's what they good for. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Judy Cast here. On the accounts payable, on page four, you have TRF Environmental for asbestos sampling and analysis, for a total of $270, that's for the police department. And on page five, you have the TRF Environmental asbestos sampling and analysis for Parks and Recs, for a total of over $5,000. I'd like to know if the sampling and analysis in two different places, why did jump in the price? From $270 to $558? I don't understand that at all. I also don't see anything at all on here about the mold. And I did ask last week, and you were not here, Mayor, that I waited a while to say anything because I did contact the health department, and I did contact EEOC. And they told me that they would be contacting the village hall and making some arrangements to have things checked out. I'd like to know what's happened, what's the next step? If I can't get an answer, that's all right, because I'm gonna call them back. And I will get an answer, one way or another. Secondly, I'd like to know why we have this meeting tonight and we don't have our finance person here, we don't have Sherry here, we don't have a lawyer here. Where's the reports that these people have or should have, and why aren't we getting them? Also, I've asked before, and I don't get an answer, but I'll ask again. We got accounts payable, why can't we get a accounts receivable report? So we know what's coming into the village, and exactly how you're delving it out. That's it.
Okay. All right, the mold report you gave was like about a month ago, so you talked about how they came in and checked the mold.
As far as the mold report, a remediator came in, did an air quality check, and I could provide that to you. The air quality in the police department was fine. We have to get and hire an environmentalist, that's the step we're at now, so that they can go and check whatever mold and mildew and whatever else there is. So that's the next step, they're in the process of getting that. That individual who they're going to hire through Robinson Construction will be coming to one of the committee meetings and making a presentation. So we're all at, we're at it.
And then on the asbestos, all they did was came through and did a, an air quality, or?
No, that was just for the mold, as far as the asbestos would have been involved in that too, but as far as the asbestos, they just tried to determine where, where there was asbestos. And I, I would have to refer to Kevin Weller on that, he had a report on that.
All right. And for the Parks and Recs, the reason it was so high, because wasn't that part of the, the getting the permits and stuff to have everything removed and?
Yes.
Okay. So we had to get Cook County permits to have asbestos moved, there's special permitting you have to get in Cook County, so that's, that's being, getting those permits and everything to get, to get that removed, so that's the reason why it was so high on the Parks and Recs, is because we're having the work done in that building to get it done. All right? The reports, the accounts payables and so, all right. I would say something to Mo on again about accounts receivables. All right?
Mary Klopp. I just have two quick questions. How much is owed on the aging report? And how do we go about obtaining a copy of the collector's report?
Age report, I can tell you what's on there right now, I haven't, I don't have it in front of me tonight. And on the collector's report, I give the reports as I, as I get, in fact, I've got one tonight, I'll be giving for, for April. So. And I think the collector's reports, is that put online? The collector's reports are on the village website.
So those are never printed and put on the back table?
No. All right, but they can be printed off the village website. All right, if you have anything else, come up. Don't trip that gentleman coming up the aisle there.
When we come to the board meeting, we would like to see you guys have board meeting, not go behind there from seven o'clock until five minutes after eight. It needs to stop. When things like that, you guys should meet one day during the week and straighten out all your arguments and have all that stuff ready when you come in. Or watch you coming from back there looking like that, it just doesn't fit right with me. I don't know about nobody else, but it doesn't fit right with me. If that is a problem, why can't you guys make all this stuff arranged before you get here on a Tuesday night, especially on a night like this? I don't know about nobody else. Well, I want to see you take care of business that is the business at hand, and leave this argument alone, and do it with your personal time, not on my time when I'm coming to this meeting. Thank you.
Well, I usually always try to have executive sessions at the end of the meeting, but this, tonight's was at the request of trustee Burgess, the reason it was at the very beginning, so. All right, anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else, move to reports departments, committees, and commissions. Fire chief, soft Reagan, department, fire department 911 commission.
Okay. Over the past three weeks, the fire department responded to 68 calls. Twelve vehicle accidents, 22 fire alarms, 22 medical assists, three brush fires, three assists to other towns, two structure fires, one stove fire, one electrical problem, four COs, and one car fire. Mayor and board, be advised that after training with the water department and public works on the proper way to do hydrant flushing, the fire department finished checking Deer Creek at Lincoln Metals hydrants, for a total of 31 hydrants checked. By the order of Mayor and J.W. Farman, the fire station was declared a cooling station, and it was manned from 6:00 PM Wednesday evening through Sunday midnight. Also for National Night Out. This is just a couple of the highlights that haven't really been finalized yet, I'll get with the clerk on that, that we are planning to burn a shed, and to go along with that is, I'm working on getting some free smoke detectors. How many I would be able to get is anybody's guess, but if I get them, they will be passed out along with the literature on National Night Out. And that is my report.
Thank you. Move to the police department, Chief Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. For the period between July 1st and July 26th, the police department received 1,002 calls for service. During that period, there were 39 arrests. Couple of cases of note, on July 1st, officers received a call from a battery victim explaining she had been battered and threatened with a knife by her husband. Officers located the offender, placed him under arrest. On 7/13, officers were dispatched to Southside Address to take a battery report. Officers were met by the victims, victims, who said they had been attacked by a large group of subjects the previous day. One of the victims said they received information that the attack was posted on social media. Officers viewed the video and had the subjects identified, and made arrests. On July 20th, officers were dispatched to the 21700 block of Peterson for domestic dispute call. The victim explained the offender physically grabbed her and choked her. The offender had left the area prior to the officer's arrival, but then returned. After seeing the officers, he ran and was eventually arrested. The squad cars on the side of the police station are being decommissioned by Minor Electronics in preparation for salvage and auction. There's three more vehicles that need to be done before they can be sold. We'll be asking for a resolution once all the work is done on those vehicles. Training, our officers will be taking a training course in September, offered by Sertoma Community Mental Health and Counseling Center on mental health first aid for public safety. This is an eight-hour course that provides officers with more response options to help them de-escalate incidents and better understand mental illnesses in order to respond to mental health-related calls appropriately without compromising their safety or the safety of the individual. Tomorrow is July 27th, and it is Illinois Speed Awareness Day. The South Village Police Department is taking a proactive approach to promote safety for motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists through both education and enforcement. In Illinois during 2014, speed was a reason for 32.4% of all traffic fatalities. That's 348 deaths for the year, or one life for every 25 hours. These lives can be easily saved by being aware of our speed and understanding how speeding impacts a crash. Let's all do our part by taking a proactive approach to prevent fatalities and reduce injuries on the roadways by being aware of our speed and obeying the speed limit signs at all times. If you'd like more information about Illinois Speed Awareness, please visit www.illinoisspeedawarenessday.org. On July 21st, I drafted a letter and provided it to the Cook County State's Attorney's Office to consider opening an investigation in the mishandling of expungement police records prior to my appointment, which, they, we found that there were records that should have been destroyed via court order known as expungement, or in jurisdiction of the State's Attorney's Office. The investigative branch of that office has indicated they'd be interested in that matter. Lastly, I received a letter of thanks from a citizen for our records department, which read, "I wanted to take a moment to say thank you to Nikki and Brooke in your office. They were patient, polite, and helpful in guiding me with a ticket that was actually from code enforcement. Rather than just directing me to someone else, they took a couple of minutes to explain who and how. I know how easy it is to complain about government and police departments, especially so. Let me encourage your department and staff in continuing to be a pleasure to work with. Thank you, Brian Booter." That's the end of my report.
Thank you, chief. Move to reports of officers, we got the mayor's report. Tonight asks for a motion to approve Allen Vaverick as Director of Homeland Security. Is there a motion to approve?
So?
Got a motion in second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, Busher, please call rule.
Burgess.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Washington.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Allen, what have you, come up in the old getting swearing in and then getting sworn at, right? Of course, you've probably got a lot of swearing at, since you've been on the department for quite a few years.
Hi.
Hi.
Allen Vaverick.
Allen Vaverick.
Have you been appointed?
Have been appointed.
To be the officer.
To the officer.
Director of Homeland Security.
Director of Homeland Security.
The Village of Sawgo.
The Village of Sawgo.
The County of Cook and Will.
The County of Cook and Will.
Of Corset.
Of Corset.
To Salamisburg.
To Salamisburg.
That I support.
That I support.
Constitution.
Constitution.
United States.
United States.
Constitution.
Constitution.
Of State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
That I faithfully discharge.
That I faithfully discharge.
To be the officer.
Officer.
Homeland Security.
Security.
According to this in my bill.
According to this in my bill.
All right, I'd like to welcome you aboard, and thank you very much. I want to let everyone know that Al has really stepped up to the plate. He's served as acting director for approximately the last month, and he's been out there on the streets, I've found by calls and seen him out there, and he was very instrumental in making sure that we had the proper coverage, working along with the police department on the parade on, I think it was, what, July 2nd or 3rd? So I appreciate all the work that you've done, and I know he's got some great ideas coming up, and getting the department back up to staff. And I think you have a report that you're going to send out to trustees that you would have gave tonight, but, all right, so, thank you very much. All right, next we have collector's report for April 2016. Property taxes, there's $230.27. Other taxes, $237,177.81. Licenses and permits, there's $43,964.59. Fees and services are $175,498.13. Grants, $22,304. Zero transfers miscellaneous, $36,289.32. For total revenues for the month of April, $515,464.52. That's collector's reports for April of 2016. With that said, we'll move to village clerk, Ms. Debbie Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There will be no board meeting on next Tuesday, that is National Night Out, so we will not be meeting as a board, but we will have National Night Out behind the village hall between 5:00 and 9:00 PM. This is something that we've been doing for the last several years, and we work well with the fire department, police department, as the department. Every department, every committee, every resident who would like to set up a table, if you have something you'd like to pass out to the residents, if you're a vendor you'd like to set up, all that I ask is that you call me, and I'll be more than happy to make sure there's space for you to set up. And I encourage everybody to come out there and encourage people to sign up for your committees. We've got a lot going on in the village, so it's good to know that if we do approach new residents that come out and want to meet their elected officials and be a part of the village, it'd be nice if you could be there to greet them and encourage them to be a part of what we do. And second of all, there was a vote last week that was taken during the special meeting. As the open meetings act officer, I was, I was kind of going to agree with what trustee Tate said as far as one of the motions not being valid, because we've had that problem before, where the trustees in the middle of a special meeting have changed things around, added things, and special meetings you're supposed to stick to the agenda, it has to stay to the agenda. However, in the case of last week's meeting, we did stay to the agenda. The motion was a total motion for two different payables, and we separated the motions. Separating the motions that are already on the agenda is still proper. So the fact that we voted on that accounts payable, it did pass at that time. It was questioned as to whether or not that was a legal motion, and if it was actually passed. So the next day I did talk to the attorney, and he said that was fine. So just to reiterate, when we have a special meeting agenda, we have to stick to the topic, whether it's the trustees discussing it, whether the vote, or whether the conversation comments from the audience, it has to stick to the special meeting agenda, so in that case, that motion last week that was made did pass. Another thing that was brought to my attention, several people have been questioning as far as the decorum and lack of decorum at the board meetings, at the dais, and in the audience. Part of the problem is, somebody told me that they were unclear as to whether or not somebody gave up the floor at a particular time, or what is, what is the case, or how does it happen? Well, it just so happens we're all going to be going to IML in a couple of months, that's another thing I'm gonna talk about in a minute, and this is where we learn how to debate, and what type of motions are supposed to happen, and what we're supposed to do when we're up here. I took the ordinance number 16005, section 2.77, Rules and Regulations Concerning Motions and Questions. Limitation on debate. No member without the consent of the board or presiding officer shall speak more than once on the same subject until every member desiring to speak has spoken. No member shall speak more than twice on the same subject. No member shall speak longer than five minutes at any time, except by the consent of the board. Conduct of members during debate. While a member is speaking, no member shall hold private discourse. I think it's important that we all recognize and respect our ordinance that's in place, and I think it should also mean that while the members are speaking and trying to debate their motions, if the audience could please also respect that private discourse, it does kind of disrupt the meeting, and it kind of takes the trustees away from the business at hand. So if anybody would like a copy of this, it is on the website, but I also would be happy to provide it for you. And as far as the IML, I have put a hotel registration, I've made reservations for everybody. If you're not going to go, let me know, I just made the reservations in advance because the rooms go quickly. It's easier to cancel a reservation than it is to make one. And there's also a registration form, all trustees must fill that out and give it to me as soon as possible, so that we can get that paid on the accounts payable as soon as possible. The IML is September 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. If anybody has any questions about the IML registration or hotel, please see me, I'll be happy to help you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Move to village administrator, Director of Public Safety, J.W. Farman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and board trustees, and madam clerk. My report goes as follows. Vacant housing, we had a vacant master list shows presently $411, that's substantially down. We have, that breaks down into four, 392 houses that are vacant in South Village, as well as vacant occupied housing, we had 19. That's down from 88 as my last report, so the staff, the police department, and the code enforcement have been working pretty hard to resolve that issue, as well as public works. Scavenger contract update. As I stated in a previous board meeting, we, South Village failed to execute the terms of this contractual agreement where the public scavenger service is failure to execute those terms, and adjustments of annual rate increases failure to provide accurate housing. terms, and adjustments of annual rate increases failure to provide accurate housing accounts resulting in unpaid enough services to the vendor for $422,424. Months ago, we found out that these deficiencies, found out about these deficiencies, and made the necessary corrections. I've also been meeting with the vendor in an attempt to bring this matter to fair and equitable solution for both parties. After considerable negotiation to avoid a cutoff of services, the vendor has agreed to forgive the village of the full debt in exchange for a new 10-year contract that will provide exact language spelling out each party's obligation. The vendor has asked to appear before the board August 16, committee, committee at whole, I'm sorry, to present the terms of its new contract. Miscellaneous, staff, we have completed some necessary paperwork for Cook County for no cash bid, application for three land parcels and two for. The petition for a tax deed will be filed by the end of June. It expected that this matter will be resolved in the favor of the village in January of 2017, according to our attorneys. The other issue is the only group that I talked to the board and the mayor before has completed the employee's handbook and is in the final stage of completing a Sawville personnel manual. A presentation will be made to the board in mid-September, at least the committee of the whole board. Mr. Mayor and the board trustees, that completes my report.
Thanks, Mayor. Trustee.
Mr. Furman, when you said reimbursement, is that the money that they claim that we owe them for, I'm sorry, they owe us for, I'm sorry, homes that are vacant? Is that what you're talking about?
This is what they, you know, we asked them to count all, you know, go back and count this, and this is the number they gave up with. Now, you know, we would have to do some of, this is the number they gave us, and we, based on what we checked, it appeared to be a click. Obviously, it's not career costs, you know, all of the issues, but it's in that range of 400-some thousand dollars. And you know the representative, I won't call his name for obvious reason, but he has said, you know, he's not really trying to, he wants to forgive the village. I think he's representing the village. He's probably going to talk to the board and some trustees individually also about the matter, but he wanted to bring it up so it's specific so you don't have the situation going forward. That's what he...
So he's willing to forgive close to whatever, 400,000? And is he asking for, or did he say he's asking for a raise for rates?
You know, I, you know, I have not received and completed, he's going to submit me a completed report, a proposal that I will bring to the board. So as I understand it, there may be rate increase somewhat, but I don't know if that's true. I have to see it, so I don't want to speculate about that.
Okay, because didn't, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we just get an increase from the public, like $3 a month or something like that?
I think we did, but, you know, if you go back, trustee Burgess, this is in the abyss, you know, going back to when, you know, all this period of time that they have not, you know, according to them, they have been bidding us, building us, billing us for a certain amount of money, and what we have been doing is actually paying them based on the amount of money we got from the water cap. So I'm sure that, you know, the messaging of the issue was such, I want to say foggy, that he, that's why he decided to try to, you know, forget about this, and let's go ahead and try to get a, get a fair and equitable contract.
Okay, because, I mean, the reason I'm asking, he's looking to, the contract is upwind, the existing contract is upwind?
I think it's already up. I think. But no, you're right. I know it's a tenure, I can't tell you the date from when it started. You're right, I can't...
So now he's asking to redo that one for another 10 years? And the question I was asking, I thought a month ago that we just got a rate, I'm sorry, we, they just raised the garbage rates, I think $3 per butt or something, I'm, $3, I'm sorry, $1.50 per minute, $3 for...
I think you're right.
And that was just done maybe about a month or so ago, so I'm just...
You know, he, the representative, well, I talked to you guys, and he's going to lay everything out, you know, I don't want to go and sour the issue by saying...
No, no, I was just asking, did you recall? Do you recall that?
Yeah, we did, yeah, we did. But, you know, the issue we're talking about, as you know, is from back, you know, going back...
Yeah, well, I know where the forgiveness is from.
Okay.
It's from where the discrepancy from the houses that they, that they actually service versus the houses that are not, no one is there, but they still picked up, but they, they're charging us for that, for that reason.
The only part that's, that's need to be added to that, we had certain contractual raises going for years...
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
All right. Move to reports of trustees and board committees, senior committee, beautification committee, that's me, so. Senior committee, just to make sure everyone's aware, especially seniors, there's a fraud alert. Scams can happen to anyone. If you're on Medicare, you are a target for scammers. Remember that Medicare never calls you for personal information, they already have it. Scammers play emotions on emotions, including the love of your cats and dogs. If you are scammed, do not be embarrassed. Report what happened. Call Illinois SMP, it's the Senior Medical Patrol at age options. That's at 1-800-699-9043. See, next, senior committee opens senior activities. It's on Fridays from 12:30 to 3:00. The coordinators are Steve Shempkes and Frank Williams. There's no meetings, no membership, no dues, just come and join, fun with your peers. Light refreshments and bottled water is served. The rummy cube game, title game similar to the rummy card, is very addictive. Other games are available, plus computer, TV, and the library program. Watch for detailed flyers on monthly Saturday, open senior activities with potluck meal. Let's see, the Bloom Township Annual Senior Picnic is on Thursday, August 4th this year at Veterans Memorial Park. That's located over in Glenwood. It's from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. Tickets are $4, and they're only on sale with the township office. No tickets will be sold the day of the picnic. Free transportation to the picnic or township seniors only. Call Bloom Township Senior Wheels at 708-754-8200. Lastly, the Sawville Bluegrass resumes this Sunday from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And for vacations on Saturday, and remember, they're going to be on vacation on the Sundays of July 17th and 24th, so they're back from vacation this, this Sunday, so. That's for the senior committee, for beautification committee. Beautification committee will soon tour our village in search of Hootsie Award candidates, which will be awarded in August. The committee meets on the third Wednesday of each month at 10:00 a.m., and as always, they're looking for volunteers and/or committee members, and welcome those that wish to join in the goal of to add, maintain beautiful images to view. If interested, join, you can join the committee at their regular meeting, or you can contact them at their website, which is svbeautification@svillage.org. That concludes the report for beautification committee. All right, move to IMB, Parks and Recreation Committee, trustee Jones.
This Saturday, start at 11:00 to 3:00. Will be open gym, that's this Saturday, the 30th. And August 4th is the committee meeting, starting at 7:00 o'clock in the community center. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. Move to public works, trustee Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I see that the public works director's not here, so I was going to ask him some questions about some of the items that we discussed, so I'll have to get with him at his office. I don't like to, and I was also told to not to take someone out of their working environment, so I thought he was going to be here today to ask some of these questions, that the people that came to my public works department wanted some answers. But if you would like to, Mr. Furman, I can kind of go down, and if you want to pass it along, if not, you know, I'll have to try to find out, but there were some items that were asked, and I couldn't answer them. The driveway behind Title Max, who owns that particular driveway? Is that village owned, or is that owned by the investor that owns that property there? But that's going south of Title, um, Title Max, that, that apron or whatever you want to call it, come leading into Torrance Avenue. I couldn't answer that. And then there were some complaints about Carlisle Estate as far as the sewer lines. I know that we do take control of them, but there's a couple that were, have a dip in it, and they're not draining properly, so those are some of the other calls. And also, police chief, I, 311, is that a non, is that the non-emergency number? What is a non-emergency number? If someone wants to call but don't want to call 911, but they just want to call the police to get them to come over, do they have to dial 911? Is there another number they can dial?
They can dial, but they would be triple, 7581.
So 911 would be, that would...
7581.
But what about off hours? Does it, does it, are we reversed to Calcom?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And there also, there's Frank Wagner Street. They wanted to, some people asked about that, that guess they live in Carlisle, asked about putting a skim coat, or is there going to, is there scheduled for a skim coat on Frank Wagner Street leading into Carlisle Estates? Could that, is that on the budget, or that has to go for motorfield tax or CDBG grant And then the other ones out, and I can ask, I can ask Kevin, but those are the ones that really, people really, really wanted to find out, because I couldn't answer those questions.
Well, trustee Burgess, I'll take him, but I, I mean, if we could set up a meeting where he can come and meet you...
Okay, well, that'll probably be better if you can set up, I'll do it that way. I'll schedule it through you, find out when he can meet, and all you have to do is give me a call, email, text, or whatever, so can I...
You pick a date, and if he's here, you got it.
Okay, then I'll do that then. Okay. And last but not least, I just wanted to bring this up. The reason that we have executive session is to take care of business. There's no such thing as, you go back to argue, people agree to disagree. That's called constructive criticism. But to say that we're back there arguing, fussing, or whatever the case may be, that's when you have to take care of your, you have an executive session, so you do not talk about personnel or someone that works in the village, personal business. That's the reason for an executive session. Money is always discussed out here, but to say that we, we're taking care of business every Tuesday, it may be one, one thing or another, but this is where we're supposed to meet. To have a meeting somewhere else would be just like having another board meeting. So we can't, cannot just meet arbitrarily without posting it, having an agenda, someone taking minutes, now it's considered a regular meeting. So we try to do it when we have our meetings that we're already here for. An executive session is used primarily to discuss business in the back, especially for personnel or real estate. With that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Move to Housing and Governmental Committee, trustee Tate.
Thank you. Thank you. Works, I guess. We met on, first of all, the first thing was the IGRC Community Partnership Team, and we met on 13 July, and we met at the fire station. And what we did was finalize some of the plans to support the corn and dog rolls, which will be held on 17th of September. And we decided that we would not do the bike rodeo, which we had been planning to do, because it takes up a lot of space to do the bike rodeo and have evaluators out there for their children. So we're not going to do the bike rodeo. However, we're still waiting and going to try to do bike registration during the corn and dog rolls. We also put on hold the ID card for the children, ID cards for the children, the fingerprinting and that type of activity, we get more input. And a couple of people that are trying to get background information of what we need to do with regards to those two topics. The other thing was, we wanted to, we discussed having a recognition ceremony, and that's to recognize Sawville's young people who have now gone on to college or found great jobs doing something after high school. And, and recognize them as being former or present Sawville's residents, saying that we appreciate them staying on the right track, accomplishing whatever their goals were. We just felt that the village should do some kind of recognition for, for that. And we talked about having it during an off meeting, not when we're having a, a board meeting or, or raising commitmenting. Just have a night set aside where we're going to ask the young people to come in, if they're in town, or their family members can come in and be recognized for their being Sawville's residents that are doing great things with their lives after leaving Sawville. So that was a discussion, and we have to get more information on that and how we want the village to, to weigh in on that. We discussed the homework lab at the library, that's still going on. The summer reading programs at the library are still going on. They have low participation, so if you have children or young people that need homework assistance, they're qualified people at the library to help them do their homework and learn, I guess, but also the summer reading programs are there. One other thing, we, I realized that there was a job fair that was held recently, and I think it was held at the community's center. We discussed that and trying to enhance that program, so that's a topic for discussion that the board's going to address. Now, we, I would like to get a board approval on a couple of things that we talked about. They're going to start doing, the committee's going to start doing tours of some of the businesses in Sawville that we can, that they can tour to show the young people potential job opportunities, that type of thing. But they also would like to have a tour of the municipality, this building, the community center, and the senior center, to show them the buildings from the inside of the buildings and how people are working in those buildings and what the buildings are designed for. That's something this board would have to approve, and I would like to have it, that approval as soon as possible so I can report back to the partnership team of whether or not those things can occur. One major activity that we discussed is, is having someone in the municipality take on responsibility of community services. And that's the program that's, that Bloom Trail has, where their seniors must perform community service in the community as a graduation requirement. So the committee wanted to know if the village could have someone appointed that can interact with Bloom Trail to find out what we need to do, to do to become part of the program so that students will have the village as an option to do their community service to, to fulfill their graduation requirements. And that's about to get some input or feedback from the board if you think the village should be involved in doing that or, or not. That's simply a question that, that's out there. The, our housing and IGRC committee met on the 28th of July. And we, just from the housing portion of it, trustee Burgess and I have worked on, on revising the manual that residents receive when they move into Sawville. And it's merely updating it. There are a lot of things that are outdated in it, and I have copies that I want to give to the board members, and I would like you to review it, get your input, and for the next committee meeting, we can have this on the agenda to discuss, and we can finally approve it and bring it back to this board for its approval. But it's revising, you may have seen something like this once upon a time. This is given out at the front counter when you move into Sawville, and it lists all the emergency contacts, it talks about the committees, it talks about the businesses, churches, et cetera. So it's a valuable document for if you're just moving into a community, and we've just been working to, to revise it. As I said, once, once you, the board gets a chance to look at this and give us your input, we'll do a final document that's going to be disseminated and be available for the village residents. And I would like you to review this between now and the next committee meeting and come back with your input or your suggestions. Trustee Burgess, I don't have one for you because you have one from when we've been working on it. I have the two for trustee Williams and, excuse me, trustee Washington and trustee Jones. I have your copies here. I don't want to reach over everybody, I give it to you. Trustee Williams and trustee Myers, these are yours. Take time and, and look at it, and if you think something needs to be revised or updated, be prepared to present that to us at the next meeting so that we can get that... be prepared to present that to us at the next meeting so that we can get that done. That's on, on the housing portion of it. The IGRC portion of it is, is that we're working with some communities now to find out the good things that they're doing that South Village could probably benefit from. Some may not be possible depending on the community. But we're still working on that. We think there are things that other communities are doing that I find, in talking to them and meeting with them, I found some of them are beneficial. And I think what really helps South Village to, the residents particularly, to benefit from some of the programs they have in place and some of the things they're doing that's on a positive note. And why we're not doing it is not even up for discussion. That's not important why we are not doing it. The question is, let's identify those things and find a way to them, to do them and benefit, for the benefit of the South Village residents. So we're still working on, on that portion of it. It's going to take a while. We have about six more communities to, that we have to meet with and talk to them. And we're talking to the people that work in these communities. We're talking to the directors and that type of thing. And I've even spoken with some trustees to, to get some perspective on, on some things that we should be trying to do to better South Village from that perspective. So look forward, you start hearing bits and pieces of those things. The, the IGRC, people that we have are working really hard. They're making a lot of phone calls. They're getting a little frustrated because some, some communities don't want to share information. And, but they're, they're sticking to it. And we have Judy Cass who's sitting audience tonight, who's, who's really been instrumental in trying to get this thing going for us. I think at the end of, at the end of the day, you're going to see some positive things that come out of this activity. And I think the South Village residents, some of them will be pleased. And those who are not pleased, we'll keep working to try to find a way to please you. The next meeting for the partnership team will be on the tenth of August at three P.M. It's an open meeting, so you can come and listen and hear what everyone has to say. And unless there's some objections from the board, we're going to meet here. We moved it around. We started District 168, we was at a fire station. We're not going to go to the police station, chief, so don't, don't, don't get worried.
You're not worried.
Well, I think if you can take care of the mold and the vessels over there, we'll be over there. But, but until you take care of those two things, I don't think we're going to visit you. But the next meeting is the tenth of August. Please come out, it's at three P.M. And you get a chance to hear from the team members of all the three taxing bodies and their ideas about how to better South Village. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Tate.
Yes. I have a couple of questions. The recognition that you guys are talking about, is that something, and you guys may not, I know you're not ready to present yet, but is that something that people can nominate people for? And if so, what's the process?
Right now, we're, oh, we're getting all of our nominations from Bloom Township. And so it's, it's being funneled through them because for some reason they keep contact with, with students as they progress on and when they get jobs, they get, I don't know how they do it, but they keep contact. So we're only taking input from them at the present time.
Okay.
But we can, I can definitely bring that up and open it up to anyone making a nomination for recognition.
Okay. And then you talked about the tours that are happening and that you wanted a, a vote from the board. And I know that you said you were talking about, you wanted us to come back with any recommendations or anything about this booklet. Are you planning on being on the agenda for the next committee meeting in three weeks to discuss it?
I hope, I hope we are. I'm asking that we, that I be placed on the agenda so that we can discuss the handbook and, and that all, everyone provides their input so we can have one, one consolidated document.
Okay. And is that when we want the consent for the, because we wouldn't be able to take a photo, the committee need that consensus for the tour?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, and who, who's going to be responsible? Because it has to be someone here that's going to be responsible and get them into the senior center, get them here and stay with them as they go on the tour.
And is that something that, it's going to be like a one-day thing?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. I, I, we do not, and we played with numbers before because there've been tours throughout different businesses in South Village. And we don't think we need to stretch it out for five days or anything like that. We think we can do it all in one day. But it may be a full day depending on how many students are interested in the tour. And we won't know that until we start signing them up, then I can come back and say, well, we have fifty children or young people that went to tour, and we could just take it from there.
Okay. And then lastly, the volunteers. I know that we have had a couple people throughout the years coming to volunteer for different things, for Girl Scouts, for Boy Scouts, things like that. And I know generally it goes through the village clerk's office, but I didn't know, is that something that you're going to present to when you're on the committee meeting agenda to see? Because I didn't even know Bloom Trail did that when they required community service for graduation now.
Yeah.
So is that something that you're going to present at that time too?
I, I don't want to, I'm, I'm going to talk about it, but I don't want to discuss the details of how they actually do it. I would rather for whoever's nominated in the village to make contact with Bloom Trail and have a one-on-one discussion where they can get a full understanding. I just know that Bloom Trail requires them to have community services, positive graduation requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
You said two questions.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Move to Public Safety Orders Review Committee, trustee Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, I would have a meeting at nine A.M. Meeting with my co-chair and for the Safety and Orders Review Committee. And after that, I'll schedule a separate meeting for the subcommittee for the orders review. And then I will read the, at the end, I will read the, all the letters that make it real quick for you. And then the second item, we did have the cooling center open in all those hot evenings. We did have one or two people stop in and visit us. However, we did have a whole bunch of people coming to park a lot and said we've been Pokemon, whatever that may mean. I guess the fire station is a Pokemon place or whatever. Just that remember, we don't care if you come, but be careful, there is emergency equipment rolling in and out of that station. Just to be very careful. Yeah, I think the police department is on that list too. That I want us, night out, Kevin, we're going to go ahead and construct that, a small building out there. We're going to light it up and we're going to show the people how quick the smoke detectors and everything alerts on and how important it should be to have one. So that is on plan for out there that night. The last thing is, in August, I've been meeting with the apartment management of, for Crossroads and Jeffrey Apartments. We used to, many years ago, walk through and make sure each apartment had a fire, fire signature, smoke detector, CO detector. And the chief wants us also to take a look at the balconies on the, some of these, because some of the balcony people were roast, having barbecues on and they're starting to look pretty unsafe. So we'll take a look at those. That's not happening in August and September. And with that, that's all I have. I do have one question throughout the chief though. Could, is that possible that you could get the report that you're going to give Ms. Cass on the mold and asbestos, could you make sure that all the trustee gets that too, sir?
I will give it to the clerk and she can keep last of that.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have, sir.
All right. You see, you mentioned Pokemon or Pokemon. Now, it's fire department, I think the police department is the spot, I think the village hall is the spot. And I saw someone walking out in the park with her phone, trying to find the spot on the park, so we're, we're, we're pretty well covered, I think. So, all right. Move to Neighborhood Watch Committee, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. First of all, I want to, see, I've never seen no department heads at these meetings before. It looks a little strange not to see anybody here to ask any questions to. But nevertheless, I guess we can direct any questions that we have for them to you, Mr. Fairman. So to not prolong the time tonight, I'll just talk to you about it later, some questions that I have for some department heads. Also, I wanted to let the chief know that I talked to one of my block club captains over in, on Brookwood North on two hundred and twenty-third street. And they said on that block has been somebody breaking their cars all the way down, not stealing the cars, and not really stealing nothing, but it looked like they're looking for money because everything is on the seat, but the radio is not vandalized. I was over there today talking with neighbors in that area, and they wanted me to let you know that somebody's been breaking in the cars just on that one little strip, and I'll give you more details later. Also, I wanted to thank my co-chair, trustee Myers, for going out and purchasing some vests for us for the last two Fridays. We have not been able to tag for our back-to-school book bags because we were not able to locate the vests. Every place where we were told the vests were going to be, they were not there, so we had our people in place out there. So I want to thank my co-chair for going out and purchasing vests and hoping probably got to pay you back.
Trustee Washington, you want to think they, they knew one of the director of Homeland Security, he was the one filing them out and picked up the vests for us.
Okay. Well, you called me on the phone and you told me you got them, so thank you.
I do have them, yes, I do.
Okay. I'm going by what I hear. Okay. Also, also, I want to say a big thank you to all of those that's been actually dropping off supplies here at the village hall. You know who you are. Thank you, thank you, thank you. On behalf of the children, we have approximately two and a half weeks before School District 168 have their back-to-school bash. That's a very big event that they do. And Neighborhood Watch is going to be doing that back-to-school book bag drive in conjunction with them there at Rick Over giving out five hundred book bags with supplies. So a big thank you to all of those that have been dropping off supplies and for all those that are pending. And as you know, we always have a program, like a little short rally or a talk. And all of those people that do sponsor and help to get those book bags, we put your name on our sponsorship list. So those that are going to be sponsoring and have been sponsoring, we want to thank you again, and your name will be on the list of someone or a business or a company that helped to sponsor the purchasing of those book bags. And finally, I want to also say that when we were going to go out to tag, I know that there was a process to be able to tag on the street. You have to go through the police department and give them the dates and the times. We have experienced other people out there asking for money for various things. And I said, you know, it's not a problem, but did you guys get permission? It's like, no, we just want to tag for this or for that. I even had people from another area over here tagging for their softball team. I'm like, okay, I would never go to another area, tag for South Village book bags, but if people are giving, that's fine. So I just want to, you can tell me later, not now, what is the process because of us not being able to have the vests? And because also it was just so hot, like ninety degrees, and we were advised not to be out there standing for four hours. Some of our block club captains are not as young as they used to be out there in that heat. So we, we're pushing those dates for tagging back literally up to school starting back. Just FYI, if you see us out there, the residents are great and they're very generous, they're helping us make our quota every year. And I just wanted to thank them and thank the police department and all those that would be involved in making this a success again. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Move to Budget, Finance, and Community Relations Committee, trustee Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Outreach Partnership Committee met tonight. We did discuss National Night Out as well as the sixtieth anniversary that is coming up next year. I know the, the village clerk did state, but just as a reminder, National Night Out will be next Tuesday from five to nine. We will be selling walking tacos like we have in the past, and that is a fundraising effort for the sixtieth anniversary. Also, as I stated a couple, three or four weeks ago, I think now, that the board was invited to participate in a chopped-esque type competition. And no one has come forward that they would like to participate. If somebody was, I would like to know if you could just contact me, let me know after the board meeting, if you would like to participate. If no one on the board is going to participate, then I want to make sure that we can, not, the committee won't have to go forward, but if we can get at least two other people besides myself, so a total of three people to participate in this, then we have to let the committee have time to go out and prepare the hopefully not-so-hard baskets to participate in the chopped competition. And again, what that would be is members of this board being able to participate, kind of going against each other. For anybody who hasn't seen the show Chopped, you would be presented, the participants would be presented a basket full of food items that don't normally go together, and they would be required to make a meal. And then out of that, each contestant would, people would be, you'd have judges, people would be able to come up and vote. And then every vote would be, we haven't come up with a price yet because we don't have solidified participants, but like ten cents a vote, let's say. And it would be a fifty-fifty situation. The winner who got the most votes would be able to keep the funds, or if they so choose, graciously turn them over to the efforts for the sixtieth anniversary committee, which is where the other fifty percent of that would go towards. So again, for anybody, any board members who would like to participate, if you could let me know after the meeting so that I can address the committee to go out and buy the items, that would be great. And as far as the sixtieth anniversary committee, just as a reminder, the, the mayor did ask the Public Relations Committee to take that on. And I don't know that I've said this in public, I transferred that to the Community Outreach Partnership Committee because there's more people in there. So the actual sixtieth anniversary committee will be the, the Community Outreach Partnership Committee. However, we are still looking for volunteers for the subcommittees. We talked about the subcommittees before. We talked fundraising, events, entertainment, marketing, publishing, that kind of thing. We are still looking for other volunteers because we would like to have those subcommittees filled. The village clerk did step up to, to do the fundraising committee portion of it. So anybody who would like to be a part of the fundraising committee, please contact her. And then we are, at this point in time, everything else is running through the Community Outreach Partnership, but we would like some more volunteers. So if you would like to volunteer, please let me know, and that's all I have.
Trustee, when is the date for the, the making of?
It would be during National Night Out.
That's, that's next week.
If, if we get enough participants, I have full faith that my committee can come up with the, the needed amount of baskets, but I accept your challenge.
Is there something we need a grill for to make?
Well, I, I'm going to tell you this. Be prepared, because we won't know what the things are. So what I would suggest is if you have some sort of like electric skillet, I think you should bring that. If, you know, if you had something, there, there are grills out there, or maybe you'd like to bring your own grill, because if you're a grill master, that might be something you'd want to do. If you're, if you're somebody who likes to boil things, possibly, I don't know, I don't know about an oven, maybe a confection oven, those are small, maybe you want to bring that out. I have no idea because I, at this point, it hasn't been determined whether it's going to be entree, an appetizer, or a dessert. We will not know until we are presented the basket and they tell us, make a dessert out of this, make an entree out of this. But right now, we just need people.
So I guess the last question is, do we have to do it ourselves or can you?
Yes. Yes. No, there is, there is no delegation. It is a board responsibility, so you cannot delegate. You, you know.
I'll take your challenge.
Okay. Okay. So we have three. Anybody else, let me know after the board meeting, and I can lift the people, but we all know that we do have three. So start thinking, and again, don't make it too hard, please.
Yes, let's make it edible too, if you would, please.
Well, that's what I said. Don't try, try to make something that somebody's going to want to eat, not the weird stuff together.
Don't remind me of China right now. Just kind of make something good.
Right. Let's keep it.
All right. And before I go to the next, I just wish the board, well, give me the opportunity, I just noticed that Kenneth Flock came in from the Keith, I'm sorry, Keith, came in from the Bloom Township Food Pantry. Would you like to share with the residents a little about the pantry real quick?
Can you give me my mic? Good evening, everyone. Excuse me for my flip-flop. I was just coming to be observed. However, Bloom Township, we had just recently opened our new food pantry. Bloom Township, South Village is a full member of Bloom Township, so every resident of South Village is a member of Township. And to qualify for the food pantry, all you need is a ID and a current utility bill that matches the address on your ID. The food pantry has been super-duper upgraded. We just spent seven hundred and fifty thousand over the last six months to rebuild a facility to turn into food pantry. And you no longer just get beans and canned food, now you get, what day we was out there barbecuing? Yesterday. Yeah. How does it was yesterday? We was out there barbecuing yesterday. And so now the food pantry, yesterday they got steaks and chicken and, and, and fresh fruits, fresh vegetables, potatoes. They was walking out of there with, with, some people had four or five bags. So it's a really good food pantry. It's sponsored by the Chicago Food Depository. And for all those who know residents of South Village who have, need, no family and friends or other residents who have food needs, please send them out to Bloom Township, four twenty-five South Halsted. Those days are Monday, three to seven-thirty, and Wednesday, ten to two. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out and sharing. And then we'll make sure to get another video out and also make sure it's on the website. So I apologize for missing the, the big day, but we appreciate everything you're doing for, for the South Summers and for the Bloom Township. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we move to new business. IMA, motion to approve all accounts payable and disbursements for June 15, 2016 through June 28, 2016, according to South Village policy. Third-time supplemental for approval, is there a motion to approve? Got a motion, is there a second? We have a motion, a second, any questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee.
Who gave, who put down that third-time submitted for approval? What was the reason for that?
This is the third time, it's before the board.
I know that, I'm saying, what was the reason?
So then you knew which one you were approving?
The date, let us know what that was.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing non-vote group, please call.
Burgess?
No.
Jones?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Tates?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Item B, motion to approve all accounts payable and disbursements for June 29 through July 26, 2016, according to South Village policies, is there a motion to approve?
Some of them.
We got a motion, is there a second?
Sorry.
We got a motion, a second, any questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee Jones.
On the, the general fund for Parks and Recreation, the Parks and Grounds, as far as asbestos sampling analysis for $5,580, where is the IS for, as we don't have any finance here, so I'll direct it to Fairman. Since we're paying this out, so that means that we, we have a contract to start moving on with this, or what?
Yeah, next up is... We're gonna have to run through the budget committee and then, you know, get it approved by the board, then we do it? Unless somebody want to pass that process up?
So, this, this is, we're gonna start on this.
Yes, I mean, that's what we got, what the process is, we got to get the budget committee to meet and approve it, and they can prove how the board is done.
So is there invoice for this?
We have, for which one?
As far as the payment for the $5,580?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to have a copy.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee?
On the same note, trustee Jones had a question. On page, page four, the general fund, police department, said that the TRS Environmental Corporation asbestos sampling for 257, underneath it says Cook County Department of Environmental Asbestos Sampling Agency. Two questions. One, so Cook County did come out here and looked at and gave us opinion, amount to get removed, is that what I'm reading?
Well, I'm gonna tell you that the board directed Robinson Engineering to move forward on both locations, so Robinson Engineering has been working with all the proper agencies to make sure that we've done the testing. So, when you've got the asbestos sampling analysis, again, that's who the invoices for through Cook County.
So, why couldn't all of them, I know they're in different departments, but one of them on Parks and Recreation is over $5,000, and the other one is not quite there, it's pretty close, but why couldn't they, if Cook County was already out here on the police department, why couldn't they take a walk another 150 something feet and check out the asbestos problem we have in at the center? I mean, kill two birds with one stone, or would that have been a, anyway, as long as they've both been done, and we get a report on it, I have no problem on it.
Yeah, in fact, do me a favor, GW, get ahold of Jim Zarneck tomorrow morning, and ask him to forward that report over, and then give it to the village clerk, she can send it out to the board. But again, this is something we've been moving, I guess you can say a little bit quicker than other things, because the board has made such a big deal about it, and, you know, when you're dealing with mold, asbestos, things like that, there's just steps you have to take. You've got to do your analysis, you have to have sampling, you have to get special permitting if they find it, so.
I have one more question.
Okay.
A few weeks back, the village administrator announced to us, I believe it was, just a referendum, that there was a negotiation with Skyline, I don't know, Skyline Republic and everything. Is this the price that we're paying out to them, is this the outcome of that?
Which page are you on?
It's on the general for the payout for the Skyline, the...
Can you give me a page number?
And...
Look in the top right-hand corner.
I just wondered, is that the, is that the final thing that the Republic is supposed to be in charge, is that amount of payment, is that amount we owe?
Those amounts are for June and for May.
Oh, okay, so that's not their answer to their renegotiation then?
No, that's correct. Those are for May and June payments. Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Trustee.
Page one, middle of the page, where it says minimum press business cards, what is, what is that, is that for? Who, or what person did order business cards?
We can find out. I mean, business cards go everywhere all the time. In fact, I'm out of business, business cards, I think I can get some, too.
So no one knows who ordered those? Page three, police department, reimbursement for gas, did an officer have to actually pay for gas for his, for the village vehicle? My question would be...
He was, it was our K-9 officer.
No, no, I'm saying, if he didn't bring his wallet or credit card or cash, would he have been out of gas? I mean, I'm looking at...
He would have been out of gas. He would have been out of sight of the road.
That's management, okay. Also, maybe you can answer that, I don't know, maybe Mr. Fairman, I added up three different payouts for federal signal reconditioned siren. Did they can, give us a, each department paid 20, $2,300, each department, came out of fire, ESD and police. Was that for a reconditioned siren, over $6,900, or was it to replace the siren that we have? And if it is, I think we have two sirens, is it replace both of them or one of them?
It's not replaced, it was reconditioning of those sirens, right? Checking the batteries and...
It's the reconditioning of the siren. I think, I don't know if it's took, not four, but three, it's across 394.
394, you've got...
So this was a TIF expense?
That is, that is where, as I understand, and I can get more specific, that is where
I understand the device is.
Okay, no, there's two. There's another one on 223rd Street, but I'm asking, is it to replace the sirens? Now you said there's one in TIF. Last time, we did take it out of a TIF expense, this time it's coming out of each one of those budgets, aligned out of from each department. So I'm just wondering, is that, is that the case, especially over there where WIMPAC is at, right there in the middle? That's, last time, it was taken out of TIF money. This time, I see it's coming out of the budget, so the department has.
I think on TIF, you can use it where the one siren is in TIF.
Right.
We have two or three other sirens that are not within TIFs.
Okay, does anyone know, I know we're two. Where's another siren?
You got the one on the sock trail. At the wire department.
Okay, that's one on the sock trail.
Then you got the one on 223rd and...
Yes, by Brooklyn, right.
You got the one over in the TIF.
Okay.
Did we ever put one out there by Yates? I can't remember if we did one out there by Lincoln Meadows, I can't remember. I've never talked about that one, but...
Okay, because the reason why I'm asking, last time, we did pay for the one by WIMPAC, so you're saying the two were taken out of the budgets of the three different departments? Is that correct?
As I understand, it's pretty expensive to buy a new one that was just a reconditioned one.
Right, but I'm just saying, that money replaced what we had. It's not for just batteries, I'm trying to say, because a lot of batteries don't cost that much, so was it for a recon, it was for a reconditioned siren, probably just two?
I'd have to say, you know, as I understand, a recondition, I'll get the number, I think it's one, but I'll, maybe two, I will get that number.
Okay. Page four, in the top of the page, police department tuition fee, is that for the, what is that for? Is that for, is that for the new officer, or?
The, both, first, the new officer had to go to Chicago Police Academy, so that's one fee. Then the other officer had to do an 80-hour refresher class down at Southern Illinois, which was mandatory. He had previously paid on his own prior to coming to the department for his certification through the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board, so there's a two-week class that he has to go to, to be updated and certified.
Okay. Back to page one, where it's titled Professional Services, and there's two lawyers there. It said a partial, I guess it was a partial paid invoice for the top one, for $2,600. What did we pay? It says partial, but is this what we still owe, or this is what we paid, and how much do we still owe?
Partial, what page are you on?
Page one.
Okay.
Under the lawyer, I cannot pronounce his name, Krabika, but it's under the general fund, it's under Professional Services, and it has $2,600, and it has PR behind it, which means it's a partial paid invoice. What is the balance of that, or are we paying, is this the balance, and what was the original amount?
This is, as I understand, Professional Services, you want to have two attorneys that they, maybe conflicts, they represent different employees in this, in the lawsuit. If this is ongoing, I'd have to check on and see if that's ongoing.
So we don't know if this is, did this pay him out, because right below that has another fee from the same lawyer for 720. So that's what I'm asking, is the two, 2,600, a payment, and we still owe something, and if so, what do we owe, and what is the 720 under the same law firm? Is that for something entirely different, or is it for the same thing?
I think what we're identifying here, I talked to Mr. Mohan about it, is one covers the period end, and the one, 17, 20, 13, and the other one covers the 4, 10, 20, 14. So these are, that's what the two fees are about, reference. If this court case is over, your question, I'd have to find out if there's any other fees related to it.
Okay, so we still, basically what you're saying, we still may owe them?
No, what I'm saying is, I basically don't know. If the case is closed.
All right.
And the village itself insured for the first $50,000.
And my last question, and we discussed this years and years and years ago, about car washes. We have, I mean, you know, we need to establish, and we talked about this before, community or something, that we can, instead of sending these kids to jail or whatever, we should have some type of community service if they're caught walking in the street. You know, and some of those things that we, those community services could be the washing of these cars, not only just the fire, the police department, but the fire, whatever, for community service for someone rather than trying to give them a record. I would like to go on record that we try to establish something like that, and I have no problem with talking with the fire, police, and ESD, basically the police department, because they're the ones that's, you know, are actually out there, and they, they give the, you know, teenagers and young adults citations. I would like to see if we can establish a pool, and quite naturally, if they don't honor that, then we move forward with conviction. But a pool that we can have them do some things in the village under a community service contract, much like what the city does, I'm sorry, Chicago does, and some of these other surrounding communities do the same thing. And I would like to see something like that done, and whatever we have to do, and I'm talking to the chiefs, well, the other chief is not here, is not here, but talking to them and the village manager, that we can set up some type of program, rather than always, you know, for misdemeanor-type citations, not quite naturally, someone's convicted of murder, they can't go and go to, come to this, but something that we can do to establish a community service ongoing. Yes, it's gonna take somebody to, as a police officer or as a person in the fire department to oversee that, but I would like to see us start something like that, so we can have an alternative rather than just always trying to prosecute, I U.
Trustee Mayor, trustee, you'd like to comment on that? When I was in charge of it for almost 16 years here in town, what I did, I approached at that time, went over to the chief judge in Markham, and there was several others that went to, you know, a smaller class, and then he said we, we had to sign off and monitor the kids, and we'd be fully responsible for it, but that way, what you get yourself into is that you're going to have the county court system sending people over to you, you're gonna have our adjudication system sending students over to us at Woffing the Street, let's say Woffing the Street. It could take a lot of work, but it does not have to be a police officer. It does not have to be, it just have to be a full-time employee of this village to monitor the, the community service, and he has to turn in a full report, and at that time, we had to give a report to the chief judge of Markham. However, I know the chief probably could check into it a lot quicker than I could, but it'd be something, I agree with you, yes, we do need it, and I'm 100% behind you to move it on.
Right, because we're hiring now part-timers that could do things like that, part-time police officers, that'd be a great thing for them to do, because there's certain things they cannot do out there on the streets. So I'm just looking that, you know, we're doing all this hiring of part-timers or whatever, these are some of the things that we should look to, you know, to help out. Everyone makes mistakes, but I'm just hoping that we can, you know, come up with something. Yes, it takes work to do it, yes, it is, and work involved, but we have to give an alternative rather than trying to lock everybody up. But we're, right now, we're talking about finances, so those are some of the questions that I was trying, I asked Mohan some of them yesterday, and some of these I didn't get a chance to go through, because I was talking about something else, so that's why I asked you, Mr. Fairman, because I needed to find out, have some clarity on some of these things that were, that were discussed. But I still would like to know, as far as the money coming out of each department for the sirens, you know, you said reconditioned, and that means, reconditioned means either they replaced it where they used one, or they went inside of it and replaced the parts and kept the original one. And I just wanted to know that before we go forward, because I don't want to come back next week or whatever, and they went out, or we have to purchase a brand-new one for whatever reason.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing non-vote group, please call.
Jones?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Tates?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. We got item C, motion to approve special meeting minutes for June 28, 2016, is there a motion to approve? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any questions or comments? Hearing non-vote group, please call.
Myers?
Yes.
Tates?
President.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
No.
You said yes?
Yes.
President goes with the majority?
No, president's state, president is a president.
President's president, so motion...
Abstaining goes with the majority.
We're gonna ask Mr. Mayor to also vote.
Mayor votes yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item D, motion to approve board meeting minutes for June 28, 2016, is there a motion to approve?
Hello?
We got a motion, a second, any questions or comments? Hearing non-vote group, please call.
Tates?
Right.
Williams?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Jones?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Mayor votes yes. Motion carries. I have number nine miscellaneous comments from the mayor and the board of trustees. This time, we'll start from this end. Trustee Burgess.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I do have, now, this is something that I, I do have, and I'm just asking, I've received some emails and also comments about a birthday congratulations from several residents that are here, asking me, what is that? I told them I never seen it, I didn't get one personally, but quite a few of them. I'm just wondering... I'm just wondering, first of all, where did we get that money from? Because if everyone is getting a birthday greeting on letterhead and stamped in our stamp machine, that's roughly forty-eight cents times how many thousands of residents that get that. Where was that money? We always talk about the budget, where did that come from? Because as long as I've been a trustee, we've never done that. Not saying that, you know, it shouldn't be, but if we're telling everyone, we don't have money, we're borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, but we have money to do this, and it was told to the salt talk committee that we didn't have money to mail out salt talk, but now we have money for birthday greetings, and it's signed by you, Mayor. It's not signed by the board, it's birthday greetings. And also, if there is a list, has to be a list, because someone is sending that out, I want a copy of the list of people that are going to be receiving and have received the letter that's on village letterhead, that's stamped by the village stamp. Because I don't know if anyone moves into the village, they give their birthday. I didn't know there was a requirement. So where are we getting, and I say we, because it's part of my money too, getting these, this list, so we can send this out? So I request a copy of whatever this list is, and as I stated before, where did we get this money from? And who on this board okay to spend this kind of money each and every month?
All right, anything else?
Yes, I need an answer.
Take your comments, anything?
Perme, I'm asking you, Mayor, you're here. I mean, I don't need to, as someone stated, we don't have to have an executive session or that. This is a question, this is, this is village money. And if you're giving out to two thousand people, that's a thousand dollars. But I'm sure it's more than two thousand residents in the village. And the second part is, where did this list emanate from? And I want a copy of this list. But, yep, it's not an answer, Mayor.
And trustee, you know, I don't have to answer it right now.
Right now?
Do you have anything else?
I want an answer, Mayor, it's not, where did you get the list? You can't answer where you got the list?
Do you have anything else, trustee? Thank you for your comments.
Now you wonder why I ask these questions, and wonder why we do these things. This is, this is, this is the people's money. This is their money. We told, we sit back and say, it's cost initiative. We're not having these meetings because it's cost initiative. We're not doing this because we're trying to save money. But now we're putting this out here, and it looks very, very political. Because why are you sending birthday greetings in a town where you tell the people, we don't have money to fix your street? We don't have money to replace your fire hydrant right now? We don't have money to do a lot of things. But I will send you a fifty-cent card or a letter stating happy birthday. That's a nice gesture. Can't we afford that with all these other cuts that we're talking about doing? So you're telling me right here, and I want to see this on the, on the, on the, not the agenda, but when you do, you note, Madam Clerk, that the mayor refuses to answer a question dealing with the residents' money.
All right, trustee, your question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that we are collecting donations for book bags, and that concludes my report.
Justy Jones?
I have nothing.
Justy Tates?
I didn't know about the birthday greetings. Is that a normal practice? I never, since I've been trustee, I've never, I don't, trustees are here, that's been here, some, as long as I have, Re-Williams, the mayor has, I have been here. I've never seen birthday greetings sent out by any mayor. Not saying back in the nineteen-seventies, I don't know. But since I've been trustee here in nineteen ninety, I'm sorry, two thousand and six, I've never seen greetings sent out to the residents. Mr. Mayor, was June the only month that residents received letters?
Have any other questions?
I think residents should be concerned when your money's being spent. And I'm going to call this electioneering, that's all it is. It's an election year next year, and now we're going to send out letters with your money, taxpayers, for stationery, envelopes, and postage. Now, if you send out a hundred of those every month, twelve months in a year, do the math, I just think it's ridiculous that your money's being spent to send out letters telling someone happy birthday. Call them on the telephone, it'll be a little cheaper. A couple of weeks ago, I received an email from Clerk Williams that someone helped draft that's intended to shame and embarrass the trustees for not voting on approving an accounts payable. And you noticed tonight, I did not vote on it. There's no one here to answer your questions about accounts payable. So I would not vote to spend your money if I don't know how it's been spent. Now, in her letter, she says how appalling it was that trustees did not do what they had to do to approve all these bills, and the police are without gas for their cars, and the fire departments without gas, and, and it goes on, and it rambles. Now, understand, understand this. In this email, it's all for trustees, and, let me back up a minute. At first, I did not take it personal. It's an in-house thing, and she thought she had to send an email out. I got a copy of the document in Dunkin' Donuts. Now, that mean, oh, I didn't say you knew. Oh, okay, good. Okay. So not only is it not in-house to embarrass trustees, not whoever went to Dunkin' Donuts has a copy of it, if they wanted it, to talk about that. Now, that's ridiculous. Now, in this email, it did not say, did not say that some trustees left the meeting before it ended. It did not say the mayor dismissed the directors of the departments from the meeting before it ended. It did not say the mayor himself left the meeting before it ended. But the trustees that remained stood here, stayed here, and voted on paying payroll and liabilities for our employees. We suddenly got paid. But we did not vote on the other junk that was in accounts payable, that he dismissed everyone, so we could not get answers. And as you see tonight, there are no directors here to answer questions. None. Now, the village administrator's doing his best to answer as much as he can. And I don't blame him for not knowing everything about everything. But why aren't your directors here to answer your questions on accounts payable? I will not, I will not vote to spend your money unless I have answers to questions I have about how it's been spent. Now, if it's not being spent properly, then let them spend it. They have enough votes on this board, they don't need my one vote. They have enough to approve anything they want to approve. But for the village clerk to take the time and effort to send out an email trying to embarrass trustees, number one, that is not a village clerk's job. That's outside her job description. And I don't care, you can look at state statute or village ordinance. It does not state the village clerk has a right to try to defame, there are no, well, I'm sorry, trustee Williams, I was going to say, she has no children on this board. But I am not one of her child. I am not going to just stand by and let her run her mouth about how poor we are, how appalling we are. And I will talk to you anytime you get ready to, and address your issues. Now, I came up here today, twice today, and I had a question. I indicated we're working on this document, revising it for the village. I came up here today to ask one of the directors a question about it. What happened? One, another employee was overhearing the conversation, called the village administrator, and reported that I was here asking questions. Well, I'd be damned. Are we in prison that we cannot ask questions about what's going on in South Village? And I hope the village administrator reported it to the mayor. And I hope you guys enjoyed it. This is for the benefit of the village. I wasn't asking her to steal money or misappropriate funds. I was asking for information about the village, and what we should do for the village. And all the snitches have to run and called everybody, and says, guess what? Trustee Tates is up here asking questions. Damn right. And I'm going to, I don't need any answer, because every day, you show the exact type of person that you are. And I appreciate it, I really do, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Justy Myers?
Just a short comment on trustee Tates, and I don't go on, what I was going to say. That's our job, we are to, residents ask us questions, that's our job, to go out and investigate it, find out what's going on, regardless if we have to go to the police, fire, public works, wherever. That's our job. You have to talk to the other residents and find out. That's what, that's what we're up here for. Residents ask us the question, ask us, check into, which I have something in a couple of seconds. I will ask the police chief, or the residents that called it. But let's get to what I was going to say earlier. We've been, it's been a while since I prayed, but I have the, all the trophies. I haven't won it yet, and the person's been out of town, I will get to that. The category is the decorated car float, Walker's Special. I will just read off the first place, second, third place in each category, and then that'd be it. First place, and the, they're, they're stuffed here, so. First place is Prairie House. Another first place was the Mustang that drove Miss USA, the school district, one sixty-eight, and the South Village Animal Medical Center. Second place is South Village Bible Church, that float they had, Sets Enterprise, that's the company's on Elm Cottage Road, Mary Young and his antique car he had there, and Stagger Football Chain, they came out in Grove. And then third place, and with the Girl Scouts, Marcus Trucking, that's a trucking company over there on the south side of town, brought that big truck in, and I, I loved it. But, and South Village Daycare. I was fortunate enough to witness them receiving their trophy, and I can't explain it, they was happy, jumping around, and the truck company gave it to them. You can't, you can't, it's very, they were just, and then, then the fire department received a special award. I will tie all this up and have it on the back desk, I will give to the newspaper, or talk to her, and she said, send a copy over to you guys, you can get it. And now my question to the police chief. Last night, approximately twelve-thirty or one o'clock in the morning, I know, it's kind of odd for us whole people to be at that late, let my dog out, saw a kind of shots, and next thing I know, I kind of heard something, a racket on the scanner and stuff. Didn't pay too much attention, resident called me this morning, said, trustee Myers, could you find out what went down on my block? And it was Clyde and two-twenty-second place, there was a shooting. And now, I do not know if it's true, that's the reason I'm asking you. Was there a victim that did not make it, or was it a shot? Or could you explain if it's not an investigation?
There was a victim of a shooting, yeah, two-twenty-two-hundred on Clyde, and it's an ongoing investigation. That's all I could tell you right now.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Justy Rams?
I have a question and a comment. As far as the department has not been here, is that a permanent thing? Is that something you're going to discuss, or is that just for tonight? That's my question. My comment is, to talk about the accounts payable, my question was, and I didn't, I don't have this question, because the finance director's not here, but we talked about our K-nine officer having to be reimbursed for gas, because he had to pay for gas out of his own pocket. And I wonder if that was a result of not paying the accounts payable? Because I know that we had to go back and forth and discuss, and get phone calls and emails from the finance director, because, because accounts payable wasn't paid, then we had a situation where we ran out of gas. And we had to go, and we had to say, can we please, can we get some more gas? So I, I'm going to be, I'm going to follow up with Director Rao about that, to see if that's what the situation was. But again, as we saw on the agenda today, this is the third time that this accounts payable has been submitted. Now, yes, the first time it was here, I was the first person to walk out of the room, because I couldn't deal with the craziness anymore. I choose not to be a part of that activity, so I walked out. I don't know what happened after that, but I do know accounts payable was not passed. The week after that, there was a special meeting to pass accounts payable. It again, did not pass. So that, this is the third time that it was presented. My question is, accounts payable, is it not being passed because there are questions? Or is it not being passed because we don't want it to be passed? Because I guess, I guess my follow-up question to that would be, is, if we have accounts, if we have questions about accounts payable, and the dates for accounts payable are June fifteenth to June twenty-eighth, if we had questions about that accounts payable, could we not have gone to the finance director and said, I have a question about this line item, this, you know, whatever? And not necess, it doesn't necessarily have to be at a board meeting. It's something that could have happened through an email, through a phone call, you know, drop a letter off here, some kind of way. I mean, we all have access to this building twenty-four hours a day. There could have been communication. So I guess my, my question is, and I don't, I don't need a big long discussion from the trustees, I just, as a director, or I'm sorry, as the chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, I want to know, how can I rectify this situation? If you're asking questions to the, to the finance director, and he's not getting back to you, let me know, let me be that conduit, because my, my concern is...
You don't need to gamble, you can go.
Oh, my, my concern is, is that the fact that one document has to keep getting re-presented, and it, there, there should be no reason for it. So I, I guess I'm just, how can we fix this problem? We will be having a Budget and Finance Committee meeting on Friday. I know Mr. Fairman said that he wanted, that something has to be approved for the asbestos, for the community center, so we will be covering that. But if this is something that needs to be added to the topics that we're going to discuss, I would like to do that in enough time to change the agenda, to make that happen. Because I don't, I don't understand what the problem is. I've suggested maybe accounts payable be emailed to the board, so even if they don't come get their packets, because the packets aren't officially done till Sunday. So maybe if they got the email on Friday, maybe that could be helpful. I don't know, I just would like the board to, if you have answered to my question now, great. If not, if you want to take time to think about it, if you could email me before Friday, so I could bring it up to the committee to discuss it, because I really don't understand why we're not able to pass accounts payable, why we're not able to pay bills. If we have the money, I think that it should be something that should be paid per policy. So if I can help, this is me asking for ways to help.
I didn't get an answer. I asked questions on a couple of things, and even today, on about this one, this, um, accounts payable, and I didn't get an answer.
Can you, can you email me the questions that you have?
Oh, yeah, it was about the asbestos, and, and I...
I, I know that question from today.
Right, that's...
Did you have other questions about the other accounts payable?
I have to look back on that one.
All right. If you could, if you could email me, and maybe that's the answer. If, if anybody wants to email me, I have no problem reaching out to the board. I have no problem meeting with Mohan and figuring it out. And maybe I could email you guys the answers to your questions, because I, I'm not working, I'm just at home with the kid. So I mean, I will, Zim and I will sit there and talk to Mohan, and we will get the answers for you, if that's what it takes. But there's, there's, there's too much confusion, there's too much going back and forth, and I'd like to get the bills paid if we have the money. So if you could, if you could look back and think if you have any questions, and contact me, I have no problem sitting down.
That's, that's a good suggestion, but wouldn't it be just lovely if we could just get the answer from who we're asking the question to?
I completely agree.
That's, that's all I'm saying. I mean, that is great, you know, but it, it would be nice to, to have an open and transparent environment where we could get answers without someone being scared or in the corner, you know, thinking someone's going to do something to them. That, that, that would help. So, I mean, me having confidence in that that's going to help that situation out, I doubt it. Until we, until we get rid of the trash, that's not going to change.
Well, I, I will discuss that at the meeting too, to see if there's a better way... Well, I will discuss that at the meeting too, to see if there's a better way that trust, or Director Rao would prefer. I don't know if that needs to be a written form of communication, if he needs questions by email, so he can have something to refer back to. I will definitely talk with the committee about that. But I do agree, I think that all the trustees should have the ability to go in and get their questions asked and answered before accounts payable's passed.
Trustee Williams?
I went to Director Mohan and asked him specifically about the gas. That's an ongoing bill. You know you have to pay for the fuel each and every month, whenever it comes. It should never come down to the point where we have to have a special, not meeting, but to find out if we can pay this. It was not on the last accounts payable because, on the 28th, because he was told not to put it on there and to do other thing. He's being directed five different ways. Because my question for him is, we know that we did, that the vehicles need fuel. For an officer to have to come in and take it out of his pocket so he can go and do his job is not acceptable. That's kicked all the way up to the top. Someone is telling him not to pay. I would like to find out why you're finding out. Who's in charge of monitoring the gasoline tank over at Public Works? When they see that tank is down below a third of a tank, there should be somewhere, someone telling someone, we have to fill this tank, not waiting until it's empty. An officer can't even go over there and get two gallons, or five gallons to make his shift out. He has to put in his pocket, go out there and pay for that gas, and then get reimbursed later. That's piss-poor management. We should know ahead of time how much is in there, just like you do in your car. You don't, when you see that E come on, that's not enough. When you see that light come on, it means you need gas. Not next week, so you have to manage that. But when I bring it to this discussion, or talk to him, and trustee Tates is right, we gotta close the door, we gotta talk low, and as soon as I leave out there talking to him, he's grilled, what did he just say? What did he want? What did he come up there for? So, when we come in, we're marked as trustees. Whoever you talk to, they go right behind what he say. I mean, really, that doesn't even make sense. I'm a trustee, I'm supposed to ask questions. I'm not asking him for to borrow dollars. I'm trying to find out what we're doing. What, you know, but you can't ask, because he's scared to talk. It's not his fault, because he's grilled. He wants to keep his job. But to be grilled, once I leave, I go somewhere, and you get 15 people, you get people to come right behind him. Even one was told to write down exactly what that trustee told you, so they could put it on paper. Really? You've been a trustee as long as I have. When has that ever happened? I've never seen that. Even when we had the last administrator, it wasn't that bad. You come to work and get grilled because, you know, or you're told not to pay this bill. If you're told not to pay, fine, tell me, but we can't pay it because of so-and-so. But now, I got to read lips, I got to put on hearing aid, just to see what somebody's saying. The door's closed, the whatever, and you still whisper, because they're getting grilled. He don't know if his office is bugged or not. So, I just, I'm just, you know, it's not, it's not nothing that you can do as your committee unless you can tell somebody to quit asking them questions. It starts at the top. The top is gonna delegate what you can and cannot do. And if the top doesn't answer questions that the board brings into him, what you expect this man to do, his work in here?
There you go? All right. All right, let's see here. I don't remember if the chief announced it, but this Saturday is the golf outing for the South Village Firefighters Association. So, I don't remember if he said something about that, so if you haven't got your tickets yet, or if you want to be a part of the golf outing, I think that's this Saturday. So, you know, I've heard a lot of talk, and I've sat here and listened. First of all, department heads aren't grilled. So, it's...
You're lying.
So, the other trustees, I let you all sit there and talk and say stuff that's not true. You are lying.
But you're lying, sir.
No, sir.
They have reason to lie to me.
I did let them ramble. So, I'm going to, just so the residents know, accounts payable, we had accounts payable for a few months there. And trustees still voted no for accounts payables that have gone all the way back to, back in about the June, early June timeframe. So, you know, trustees have the opportunity to go get answers. So, you know, again, it's a trustee's responsibility to have those answers before they come up here. It's not a time that you're supposed to be using this up here for your soapbox and try to make people look bad, and make false statements that are unproven and are lies. So, you know, if you just, you know, to say that someone is being drilled, I mean, if anyone's not answering you, or they're talking quietly, because they might be scared of you, because you're bullying them. So, you know, it's a trustee's responsibility to do their job, and to come up here and vote no for something and try to make an excuse, all it is, is an excuse that they're not doing their job. All right? The question came up about the department heads. You notice tonight, department heads, there's only a few when it comes to emergency services are here. So, we'll continue doing. We have trustees. Gets kinda redundant, you know, trustee has Parks, has Public Works. You should know what's going on in Public Works. You should be working with that, with that department head.
What about the...
Just like Finance. I would look for, trustee Williams, be working closely with Mohan. And, you know, they should be coming to these meetings, giving the reports, what's happening within these departments. They have these departments. And I would look for, you know, if there's any questions, and I think that trustee Williams has already spoke up to, stuck up to the plate, it says she's willing to work out answers. But again, when it comes to accounts payable, it should be going to the finance committee. Finance committee should be able to come in here and be ready to answer any questions any trustees have, working with the finance director. So, the other thing too, is when it comes to our contractual, when you have engineers and attorneys, you know, they come here, we're paying them to sit here for hours on hours. There's no reason for them to come unless they have something to report on. So, that's what we're gonna be looking at going forward. We'll contact everyone every week before we put out the, especially the regular board meetings, find out who's got reports, who's got stuff to report on. But we'll continue to make sure we have our safety here when it comes to police, fire, and homeland security. So, all right, with that said, ask for a motion to adjourn. We got a motion and second? All in favor, say aye. Getting adjourned.